Call the order is now six o'clock. And if you could rise and find the flag, say the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your God like for all this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it looks like a full house tonight. Welcome. We've got a busy agenda and we're going to start off with some presentations tonight.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that the board knows that not only myself, the teachers, the staff and the administrators here in Oakfield, but I also know the school community appreciates what the Board of Education does for our district. October is designated as Board Appreciation Month. I think it should be all year long, especially now. I think people need to understand that your work is all voluntary. You don't get paid for being in this position. You get elected by the community to serve on the Board of Education. And your work is overwhelming, to say the least. And I just want to say thank you for your time, dedication and your service to this position. There's a token of my appreciation in front of you, representing, you know, the Oakfield Board of Education. And obviously you are aware that you see what's been going on more so recently just with all of the political views that are out there, everything that boards, you know, sometimes have to deal with. And I'm sure when you're out there in the community, you hear it. And to sit in these chairs and serve Oakfield is by far one of the greatest things you can do. But, you know, certainly it's, sometimes can be a thankless job. And so on behalf of, you know, everyone here speaking for the district, I want to appreciate, and we all appreciate what you do and support our district and everything. And then, you know, throw a $15 million capital project on it and everything else. It's a thankless job. But I wanted to appreciate you tonight and thank you for supporting this district, supporting our decisions and being unified in a voice that we are here to do what's best for kids. So thank you very much. And again, there's a token of my appreciation for all that you do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Mr. Montroy.
So I, we are lucky enough to have a grant being awarded and recommended tonight from Mr. Hoffeins for the FFA, from the Retired Educators of New York Association. So I forget, Mr. Hoffeins, come on up and Mr. Zabla, come on up. Mr. Hoffeins, could you talk, so this project near and dear to me, I think it's exciting. A blend of, you know, a grant with some public service, some community service involved with it. Makes it a great showcase of our building.
So yes, the grant that we applied for was, we've raised market animals for a number of years now in our program. But this is the first year and Owen is spearheading this project that we want to donate a steer to the food pantry in Oakfield come this August. And we saw this grant that came up and we said, hey, here's an opportunity to help us offset the cost. You know, 2,500, $3,000 to raise a steer and then just give it away. We need to cover our costs. We've been fortunate with the other market animals that we sell and raise and sell. We get the money back so we can do it again for other students. But making a complete donation is a whole different animal. And we're very fortunate to receive this grant to allow us to continue to move forward with our goals. So Ron, I'd much appreciate that. I know you've got a presentation to do, but I do have to put in a quick side note. This is like a little reunion for me tonight. I have my former 4H leaders and music teacher when I was much younger from Pioneer. As well as Joe Claus, who was my earth science teacher in high school. It's kind of a surprise when you see him come through the door and start reminiscing a little bit back when I was in high school. So, and all the other guests, I appreciate you being here as well. So Ron, would you like me to turn it over to you?
Yeah, my name is, my name is Ron Zabla. I'm the grant, teacher grant committee chairman of the Western Zone of Retired Teachers of New York. Retired educators of New York, doesn't trip off the tongue so easily yet. Because we recently had our names, our official name changed from New York State Retired Teachers Association to many retired educators of New York. And with me this evening, well, you've already have some folks mentioned. The other members of the teacher grant committee are Maria Hager, Elaine Delisle. And also here this evening is our new zone president, Michelle Claus, Michelle Claus's wife. So I'm glad they're with me too. And I'd like to read what this is all about. The retired educators of New York proudly present this certificate for the R E N Y, Ready Hudson Kramer Memorial Grant of $1,000 to Todd Hoffeins on the 16th day, 19th day, excuse me, of October 2021. The grant is given to an educational professional in memory of Ross C. Hudson and Florence Koolter Kramer, who were public school teachers and outstanding members of NYS RTA, New York State Retired Teachers Association, as it was referred to previously, as I just explained. The grant's purpose is to fund an innovative project or program in New York State Public School. Our committee found Mr. Hoffeins's presentation to be very meritorious, very praiseworthy and enough to make him the one who is the recipient of the grant. I will give you right now a copy of your certificate.
Thank you.
And then the part that's, I suppose, nitty gritty wise, the most important is your check. And it's made out to a FFA.
Perfect.
$1,000, those calves, I guess, have already been purchased, are already on the premises. And it'll be, I guess, next August, you said, right?
It's the process and the, yes.
And I guess one of the things we found most exciting about this was that is, we arrived from the community, for the community rather, from this project. And so obviously we have the animal husbandry aspect of it for Owen and the other students. But absolutely the community benefits too. And that really, that really was impressive to those of us who judged this. So without further ado, we have a long agenda, I know. I'll call it a night. But here's your, here's your check.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Should we take our masks off for the paper?
If you want to.
Yes.
Happy to. Thanks Alexis.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. The district thanks for being here. Thank you very much for the award. Congratulations Todd.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations Todd.
Next on the agenda is Mrs. Hudson and she has a few friends along with her.
We do, we do. I have Nate Stabel, who is a fifth grader playing saxophone. And I have Joshua Kipper, who has a baritone. Mr. Biggs. And I'm going to show you a little bit about what the band program is doing, but also about a program that we are using called Smart Music. There's a lot of benefits to it. I'm going to make it quick because I know that we are full of people to present tonight. So my contact info, I also have a Twitter where I post stuff about what the kids are doing and kind of update their parents have Twitter, they can check there. These are our numbers right now. So we have 22 students in third grade out of 43 kids. We have 27 in fourth grade out of 63 and 36 in fifth grade out of 47. So almost the entire fifth grade. So we have a total of 85 students playing in elementary right now. 63 of those kids will be in band. The third graders are learning and getting prepared. We'll have a goal of them playing something together at the end of the year, but not necessarily begin or band yet. So I'm going to kind of blow through this, but I just want to show you what, how we got the kids, where we got them and what instrument they settled on. This is what I showed the parents. We have three families. We don't do strings because strings are orchestra and we got a concert band, not orchestra. Then the kids get to see the different instruments. We did a demonstration of each one of these instruments so the kids can hear what it sounds like. The high school kids actually did demos of this so they can see what they would look like in the future if they chose to play that. Same thing with brass and percussion. We kind of drilled home that percussion is not just drums. Kids say they want to play drums, right? But percussion is like a whole array of things as the kids are finding out now. And then why music, right? So adding third grade, I think is awesome. A lot of people think that's crazy. I think it's great because the studies show that it helps with other subjects, right? Our ELA and math scores are great in the elementary school, but this is going to just add to it. Also the emotional wellness part, right? Coming off of COVID, this is an awesome thing for the kids to kind of be involved in and working on. I am hoping that the opportunities will continue this year, like solo festival, Al County. We're working on that right now. We don't know what that's going to look like. As they get older, marching band, jazz band, all of that kind of stuff, okay? This is what I showed the parents that the students need to be able to do, okay? But then we also have a commitment for the parents. It's a big deal, right? Listening to those screechy sounds for the first few weeks. I know half of you have kids and you're like, uh huh, yep. My third grader is playing saxophone. It's not pleasant right now. It will be more pleasant, but, so commitment from parents, just, you know, renting an instrument, encouraging them to play even though in the beginning it's not great. And then just knowing that they will be good once we, once we get through that first call. So what I want to show you and why the kids are here today is smart music. I asked Mr. Z at the beginning of the year, could we get licenses for kids to have smart music? This is a program that the district has had for teacher licenses, but not necessarily for kid licenses or for the student licenses. So how this works, and I don't even want to say this, but it also makes it very easy if we have to go remote. And now that I said that and I'm prepared, it'll never happen. But if we have to, the kids can keep playing instruments and I can in real time hear what they are playing and see what they are playing. I can also see what they're playing correctly and what they need to work on. So this is a copy of our book that we use, Essential Elements. And what I'm going to have Josh, if you can come over here. And these kids are both very brave with COVID. We haven't had performing really and they're a little nervous, but I told them they're going to do awesome. So two things happen. One, the music is displayed on here. They can just play it with, do you want to try and play through it? Think you can do it? Okay. So I'm going to have Josh try this and I will explain why it's really important for, but it's not very loud, sorry Josh. Just step here, huh? It's a repeat, right? And then you can hit it again, it's a repeat. So why this is important, okay, two reasons. One, practicing is a little more fun at home, right? With a brass instrument, Josh, can you play an F and then play a B flat? Watch his hands. Okay, this is a problem with kids that are beginning with a brass instrument. We call that a partial. So a kid can go home and practice and they can come back and this is Hudson. I practiced for 20 minutes and they practiced all the wrong notes, even though they had the right fingerings. Because brass, you can do three or more notes on every fingering, okay? So this, the important part about this is when they are home. All right buddy, not stop on. Okay, now start trying, yep. Great. And I'm going to stop it there, okay? You see it showed the notes that he got wrong. Or in yellow, it was kind of there, but not really. And then what I can do is say, huh. But he can listen to himself and follow along and say, where did I mess up, okay? So they can also send that to me. So it will go right into my smart music account. Hopefully it doesn't sound like that. But they can use their Chromebooks and play right through the microphone there and send it to me. So when they are home and they are practicing, okay, that's a huge deal and it moves things along quicker because they're learning the right partial and hearing that. Nate, if you can just come over here, we're going to make this quick. The cool thing about this, same book, they're using the same thing. And I can just come over here and pick E flat, oop, not clarinet, sorry Nate, I lied. That would be interesting to see you try and play the saxophone, right? So this is going to sound different, right? But it's going to transpose everything for him. Can you just play through it, buddy? So, keep going. I can turn it on so they can hear their own part. Great job buddy. So I can turn it on so they can hear their part. I can move the metronome around. If it's too fast and they can't figure it out, they can slow it down and practice it until they can bump it back up where it needs to be. So this is a super cool program that we are using. And two more quick things I want to show you. You guys did great, thank you.
Hey boys.
And as fifth graders, they haven't had band because of COVID and they have not performed like this. So when I say, can you come perform for the board, that's a big deal. So I'm very proud of both of them.
Good stuff guys.
Real quick to wrap things up. Most of you know Mr. Mikulski. He was a music teacher here. He's the reason I became a music teacher. I talked to his wife at the beginning of this year because I do a lot of fundraising for his scholarship, which usually gives to scholarships to graduating seniors that exhibit his values. She agreed that no kid, this is my big thing, no kid should not play an instrument because of the cost. So we have a few families that have three or more kids between third and fifth grade. That's a lot of money to drop on rental instruments. So I called Twin Village and we set up a scholarship account. And she sponsored through John's Scholarship, five instruments this year. And Rudy from Twin Village did one better and said, the clarinets and the flute, after the rental fee is paid this year, they're Oakfields. You can keep, oh wow, so that you can give them to other kids. Which is a really big deal. So we are going to be partnering with that. They are still giving the senior scholarships, but this is going to help out. We raised $2,700 in just over a day. I posted it and the community just kind of jumped right in. So that more than covered the five rentals, plus we have money put away for the seniors this year. Okay, so kind of to wrap everything up, I have a complete and accurate instrument inventory now. You guys probably toured the first time around and it was a hot mess. I have gone through everything. We know what works, what doesn't work. We have everything sorted out and put into a spreadsheet. We had seven donated instruments. We're just waiting for board approval on those. And I think to fix them all, I think it was around $500, which is less than the cost of a brand new instrument and that will serve as seven kids. We are just now, this week, going to vote on solo festival. As a music group in Genesee County, hopefully we will still have that. New rental partner. Twin Village said, Mrs. Hudson, we're so grateful for the business you gave us, but we can't keep up. And next year, we're not going to be able to service all the kids that you have sent our way. So they will continue to service the kids that have an instrument from them. But I'm going to reach out to the horn doctor, who is the guy that repairs stuff for us and see if we can partner with music and arts. I know this ahead of time, so we'll get it all, all settled. We'll get that worked out, which I guess is a good problem to have. Darien Lake 2022, kids are going to Darien Lake June 3rd, fingers crossed. Band will play two Level One pieces and chorus will also perform two pieces. And it's going to be the first time they get to perform because of COVID elsewhere away from the school. And the last thing, if you follow on Twitter, we have a band hero of the week. It's somebody who shows growth in their lessons or has done something, you know, great for that week. I put it on the wall in the hallway E and then I'll take a picture and also post it on Twitter. And the kids get that certificate at the end of the week. Nate just happens to be our band hero of the week. He has practiced a lot, which is why he's at where he's at. And his practice was very evident in his last lesson, so that's all about that. And this is just our music department. If anybody has kids in there or needs help, we're always there. You can kind of reach out. I do come up to elementary or the middle high school to help with the sixth graders a little. So I included Roger and Danielle in that as well. And I think that's about it. We're moving. You want to be number one. Our music department's on the way. We're going to start with the elementary and go right on up. So I think that's it. You guys did great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hudson.
Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation from DGA SCI, building update. Hi girls.
Good evening guys. I think you've seen all of you on the tour, so I think you have a pretty good handle on where we're at project wise, but we'll run through just a quick update for you. Budget wise, we're in the same spot. This is a shot of the tennis courts there. So we're good. No lost time incidents to date on safety, which is really good. We're really proud of that. No real noticeable quality issues, nothing that we really have to worry about. Certainly some punchless items that you saw here and there that will get addressed as we continue forward. But overall, no real quality issues to speak of. Just kind of an update on cost, payouts as of the first of October. We're about 43% billed, so we put in place about a million two, a little over a million two a month, which is moving pretty good, given the circumstances over the years, so. That's a good, kind of a good check of where we're at. Change orders, our contingencies still, they're pretty good, 657,7 remaining. We have a negative 383 executed as of yesterday, yesterday, today. So again, our goal there is to try to do that high school bathroom. Hopefully we save enough contingency funds to accomplish that at the end of the project. Just, we'll go by area and give a quick update on where we're at. So the last piece of the nurse's office is the shower diver. That's still tracking to come in on the 22nd. The shower actually came in today. That got unloaded, so that's a couple days early. Hopefully that's a good sign. But once we get that shower and diverter in, get the plumbing route finished, then we can finish up the tile and be done in the nurse's office. Must loop entrance, again there, we're waiting on storefront, we're looking at November 5th. That's pushed out a month, probably in the last month or so. So those are the kinds of things that we're struggling with, just getting materials here. Toilet room, we took a look at those. They were usable. We've got tomorrow night the partitions going in to make those complete. You saw the kinetics flooring in the classrooms. There's a little bit of base here and there. And some entryways, some rubber base that still needs to go in, but we're probably 90% on. A number of renovations and issues that need to be addressed there. Cafeteria, also we looked through there. Door and window insulation, insulation started. And I think there was some excitement to have the kids in there. So we're happy to, you know, a lot of pushing to accomplish that. We're not done. We've still got some pushing to do on the balance of the work and the kitchen work. So you'll see that happening over the next week or so. In our next final clean inspection from Department of Health next week, the 25th. Main office, again, we're close there. We're probably a couple days of work in there. Some cleaning that needs to happen, some painting still that needs to get pushed up and done. But again, I think we're a few days away from that happening. I think Jordan too has to get in there and wax the floors after, before we begin. And then we did look at the auditorium and stage, but that works proceeding. There's some steelwork that got done in there, azene area that got added. And then plus garage will be moving over into there as we finish things out in the in the elementary school. We don't want to let these guys leave campus. We're going to try to wrangle and keep them here and keep progressing on the work. Once we tend to lose labor, it's tough to get it back. So we're going to try to keep the work lined up in front of them so they can keep progressing and keep people, labor resources on site. And I think probably one of the highlights of the project to date is the site work. They did a ton of work this summer. I think the quality of the workmanship was really, really well done. They're probably 90, 95% complete. They've got some plannings to go in, they'll go in in the next week or two. But they accomplished essentially two summers worth of work in one summer. I think totally transformed the front of the campus. Looks much different, especially since all the grass has grown in, so. Good shape there. Just a couple more pics. Drop off any questions that you may have.
So our timeline's definitely, I doubt a doubt. But it goes back and forth between supplies and labor. Supplies I get, labor I'm not really understanding right now. I don't understand that at all.
Yeah, there's just a general shortage out there. So if you remember, maybe a month ago, we had an issue with tiles and getting tile setters here because of the number of bathrooms we wanted to get completed. So one of the efforts we took was we called subcontractor, one of his competitors. We were going to supplement the labor forces. So we called the biggest, the next biggest tile setter to try to get some people. We were just going to say, look, to the general metric, we're supplementing your tile labor. You're not making it happen. We're going to get, we're going to get more people in here and then we'll just backcharge it and that's the way it's going to go. When we called another tile setter, who's a big, big company, who's someone we deal with a lot, who's a large company, couldn't accomplish the work they had, couldn't get their own tile setters. So that starts to give you an indication of what's going on in the market. When you're ready to kind of pull the trigger and take away work and try to accomplish it in a different fashion, there's just nobody there to do the work.
I know I'm far removed from doing that kind of work, but when I worked in a factory, anytime I'd get overtime, I'd jump on it. And is that something, like I can't imagine that that mindset has changed so drastically since I last worked in a factory. I mean, any chance that I could get, I'd get overtime, that'd be time and a half and then I'd start making, you know, some pretty solid money. Is that something that's offered to these guys and if it is, why aren't they taking it?
I would say it's limited, the amount of overtime that's offered, because you're not going to bid a job with overtime in it. You're not going to be a little bitter if you do.
I get that, but then, but then the time, I mean, like the timelines. Like I, I guess that's the frustrating part to me. Like when I came here over the long weekend, nobody was here.
Yep, this past weekend, I think we had two tile setters working over the weekend.
Maybe, and they must have gotten, you know, I didn't see, I didn't see, I'm not like going to argue with you about it, but I didn't see anybody there.
No, I think you're.
I walked like.
You're talking about the previous weekend, yeah, there's no.
The three, the three, yeah, the three day, the three day weekend. There was nobody here and that just seemed like a lost opportunity to me. And I, you know, I don't talk to a ton of teachers in the elementary school, but it's been tough. It's been tough there, and it's hard to justify, it's hard to explain to them, you know, why this is not progressing quicker.
Yeah, I think
It really is.
All I can tell you is it's the perfect storm. It's usually you deal with one issue, whether it's a little bit of labor shortage in one area or a little bit of material shortage, sometimes steel or different things. In this case, it's everything. It's labor, it's all materials. The lead times we're seeing on things is double. And it's something we have no control over. So AK and Mike, I mean, to their credit, they have been pounding on this stuff daily. Confirming delivery dates, they're nonstop. There's only so much they can do.
I agree. The work that has been done, it looks great. The nurse's office looks fantastic. The main office over there looks fantastic, and I think it's made leaps and bounds since the last time we did a walkthrough. But it's just, you know, it's just one of those things, and I, and I get it, you know, like, we have, I have people work on my house or I give timelines and sometimes they're adjusted, but it's just, it's really hard when you've got our kids in there and they're not experiencing what we thought that they would be at this point.
Well, I think one thing, you'll notice that we have made separations between work areas and so hopefully there's no educational impact. If there is, if there's noises or dust or things that are interfering, we would be all over that and stop that in a heartbeat. So I think our team's been working pretty closely to make sure that we're getting the work accomplished that we can get accomplished, but we're also not interfering in that educational environment. This is what we do. I've been doing schools for well over twenty years and construction for over thirty-five, so. All I can say is we're doing everything we can do under behalf. And it's, it's not what we like to see, and it's not what's typical, but we're kind of stuck in this spot at the moment.
When we were doing the tour there, I think I was having a little side conversation, maybe we all couldn't hear, but you just wondered about the work that's yet to be performed, you know, the major work, the windows and the atrium. We could have a discussion in front of everybody. Are we, are we taking the best path forward? Continuing, you know, the tear out that's planned for next year, or maybe we don't know right now, but for all the reasons that you highlight right now, are there any mistakes to be learned from before we enter that next major stage of the project? Making sure that, you know, supplies are on a, on a truck and in our parking lot as much as possible before we
Because before we were, we raised these concerns. Pete was not here tonight. Said, boy, I'm really anxious if I'm doing this.
Yeah, and the past is the past, but there's still a lot to be done here yet, so let's just make sure that we learn if there were any mistakes that, that way. We're as efficient as possible going forward as, as least disruptive as possible to the staff.
I think, you know, one of the reasons we pushed so hard on the glass selection to get that done tonight was we know that it's gonna be another long leave, that it's gonna probably take us twice as long to get that as we thought. Typically, we wouldn't be too worried about that in October for the following year. But this time around, we are. We want it ready. We want it sitting in a container out on site.
So we order that, like, in November? Is that the intention? And then
Once we get everything from the architect that we need, they'll, they'll come out, they'll do their shops, and they'll get that stuff ordered.
And then we're hopeful that we have hands on it when?
I mean, it's, right now, glass and glazing systems are running like twenty weeks. As I said, the outside, they're typically ten to twelve. So that's, you know, almost five months.
You're talking like May, and you're feeling like you're gonna start tear outs of windows as soon as you've got your hands on that, or we wait until
Yeah, we won't start, we wouldn't remove anything until the other systems can go right back in.
And we're not necessarily waiting for kids to be out. We're gonna try to get a jump on that prior to summer, or what?
We're gonna get a jump on the entry because of just the complexity and the amount of work in there and trying to get that done. So the entry, we are gonna get into that in the spring. The window replacements, I'm pretty confident we can have in over a summer, provided we have the material sitting outside and we're ready to go. And so that's what we're looking to do.
And the goal on the entry, the goal on the entry then would be buttoned up when?
Before school starts again.
So before September, tear out, spring, and a lot of the kids already come back, good. Is there any other major, so, how sorry?
So sorry, Matt.
String along here. So, so those are two, the atrium, windows. Any other major items? That's it? Those are the two big things?
It's okay, no problem. The lighting, the parking lot lighting?
Yeah, so
It's something that, I mean, that's a safety concern. We have night events here. It's, it's dark out in the morning when our buses are pulling in or leaving, faculties coming in when it's dark. What can we do about getting light in that parking lot?
So I just talked to John about this today, as a matter of fact. So all of the heads are in the electrician's shop, all of the heads for the electrical lighting in the parking lot. The poles are shipping tomorrow. The electrician, the electrical contractor is saying it's usually been about a week from when they ship to when they arrive. He's ordered a lift for next week to start that work, anticipating the poles will be here. As a stopgap, you know, if we needed to get a lighting plan or two out here for if you had a big event and you wanted to throw some light into the parking lots, you know, that's, that would be kind of my backup plan to rent a lighting plant. You've seen him on probably three-way jobs or whatever, but
Those should fly up though, right? I mean, the wires are already pulled.
Yep, and we, I talked to him about the phasing and how he's gonna do it, and there's different legs of service for those lighting systems, so he's gonna try to get the most critical legs up first in the parking areas, because they're isolated and you can get those up and working while he's continuing to work on the other legs of the service.
So what do you think we'll see lights turn on then, like, in that first leg?
I'm hoping by those, if they come in, in a week, like you said, by the end of next week, I hope we have one leg of lights up out there.
So November, November first, maybe?
And is there going to be, there's a light fixture at the entrance?
No, not, not part of this plan, but there will be one. The district, we will have one out there. But it's not a part of this original plan, but we will have one out there.
It's very easy to miss the entrance. I mean, really, it's the reflector of the fire hydrant that when it's dark out, that, that's your indicator that you, you've gone too far or you're about to miss it, so.
Yeah, we've already discussed that. There will be lights out there.
Is that not something town would take care of in an intersection like that?
What's that?
Is that not something a town would take care of in an intersection like that? Is that on us?
Jordan's working on it.
Yeah, Jordan's, Jordan's working on it.
He's working with the utility company right now to figure out a solution.
Any other questions, guys?
You know, we will have wayfinding signs out there, so there is a sign that will actually be out front. We wanna make sure people can see it. So, yeah, we'll definitely have a, have a light out there and at the entrances.
Appreciate your patience. I know it's not easy. It's not easy for us. We're chomping at the bit every day to get more things done and turned over. So I just, hopefully you know that we're working hard at it. These guys are drilling down on every item every day, looking out at what's supposed to become of the following week, checking in on it, making sure it's still on schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming today on the tour, but also for the glass. We're gonna proceed with the glass that we shared today, so we're gonna inform and get that process working so the glass can get going and the frame selection that we talked about.
There it is.
So the next time we see you, we'll come back with some renderings to relook at this front elevation and then just look at these updated selections so you can see it all together.
Thank you.
It's great. Thank you so much.
I like that nineteen fifty-five feel myself.
Oh, no, okay, good. Take it with you. You can have it.
Thanks. Have a great night, and thanks for your service.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. Yeah.
How about a piece of sand with it?
Okay, next presentation is auditor's report for Langl Metzer Bar.
All right. Good evening. I'm Mike DeBatt's partner for Langl Metzer Bar. I believe you, you received a copy of the executive summary this evening in your packets. So I'm here to just go through this, high-level overview, a lot easier to get through. I know you've, you've got a lot of business to get to tonight, too, so we'll go through these six pages rather than all sixty-two of the financial statements. If you open right up
We can do the sixty-two.
What? No, no.
Just don't tell Matt, David.
So if, if you open up to page, page number one is the general fund balance sheet comparing the end of twenty twenty-one with where the district was a year ago. And really to sum up in one page, you know, if anybody asks how's the district do, overall, the total fund balance decreased by five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars this year due entirely to the transfer of two million dollars as seed money for the new, the fifteen million dollar capital project. I'm sure you're all well aware of that. Couple items, one other item I just want to point out on the general fund balance sheet, other liabilities, you'll see that's two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. It was zero last year. That's a result of a new accounting standard. It's not a new liability that the district has or anything like that. There's a new accounting standard implemented. Those funds used to be shown in the trust and agency. They now show up in the, in the general fund, so not a new liability, just a change in the presentation due to a new accounting standard, so don't be alarmed about that. And then just to point out on the undesignated fund balance, New York State property law says you should, that should be limited to four percent of next year's budget. That number is four point three eight percent this year. Just so you're aware, that's, you know, a little bit above where, where the, the property tax law says it should be. However, with, with things coming down the road, we've seen many, several districts do that this year just for some potential changes in the, in the coming years to have some flexibility in those funds, so. So a quick overview of the general fund overall. If you flip over to page two, you'll see a little more detail on the activity of the reserves of the district. You can see the district, as part of the twenty twenty-one budget process, appropriated some reserves to help balance the budget. As we were in a really unknown world at, at that time when the budget was balanced, those funds were taken out of those reserves as well as closing out the old capital reserve to transfer to that fifteen million dollar project. And then just to point out, because I didn't make it clear on here, that, that funding into the capital reserve, that's the new capital reserve that the voters approved in June this year. So it's a great place. It's money, it's getting ready for the next capital improvement project that the district will take on. And of course, that, that money stays under the control of the, of the residents of the district. You know, there's gotta be another proposition to utilize those funds there. Next couple of pages, kind of go through the general fund budget. You can see the revenue side of the budget. Came in a little bit under, under the plan. There was some surprises in there, pleasant surprises, you know, some federal funding that came in that wasn't known at the time the budget was, was fully put together. And then the surplus, BOC's refund, we're seeing across the board this year because BOC is closed early as well as the districts did in March of twenty twenty. They generally have larger surpluses that were refunded to the district in the twenty twenty-one year. And if you move right onto the expense side, you'll see this is really where the surplus came from with savings on the expense side of the budget. It's a little bit larger than last year, the, the savings on the expense side of the budget. But this is really pretty standard with what we've seen with almost all of the districts that, that we work with. As a percentage, it's maybe three or four percent more, larger surplus on the, on the budget than the prior year, which is pretty consistent with what we're seeing, just because due to COVID limitations, the district wasn't able to do everything that was planned. And then, you know, so that's, that's where that surplus was generated, was really in the savings. And of course, into the fall, we didn't really know what was gonna be happening completely with state aid. There was still some withholding and threats of reductions, so, you know, the district was really conservative on the purchasing side through, through the late fall and the spring. And at that time, some other purchases that you don't have to make once you've reached that certain point in the school year, so. That's the general fund. Any questions on the general fund before we move on? The page five is the other operating funds of the district. Really here, really jumps out at the top, the school lunch fund had a really large operating surplus this year. There was a lot of waivers, a lot of changes to the food service program. Oakfield did a great job of enhancing participation, just serving more meals. As part of COVID, the reimbursement rates were higher and all students are getting a fully reimbursed meal. So any district that was able to really drive that participation and get those meals out there had a pretty good year. That's evidenced here in Oakfield. I do just have to note on that, that year-end fund balance is in excess of what the federal guidelines say it should be. So just keep an eye on that. There's not really much you can do on it. I think the district's doing a great job in serving, serving meals and feeding the students. And that's really just what this is a result of, so just know that, you know, I've gotta tell you, because that's a regulation. Be aware of that. Keep an eye on it. See if there's any enhancements you can make to, you know, cut down wait times and things like that, but
So is there a penalty that
No, there's not a penalty for that. You know, this is the sixth district in a row I've actually had to make that statement, because, like I said, the state got a lot of waivers during COVID. Most states got a lot of waivers. It allows for serving in different locations and, like I said, the reimbursement rate's higher. So there's no penalty that goes along with that. The district's gonna have to make a plan to tell the state this is our plan to reduce the, that fund balance. You know, and it's gotta be approved. I've, I've never seen one not get approved in, in my personal experience, but that's, that's ultimately the next step, and then we'll go through next year and see, see where the district is and
What are examples of some of those plans the districts have used?
Like I said, the, the ones either to improve some equipment, if you've gotta replace a, a cooler or something like that or add a line to cut down on wait times, you know, that's one that I've recently talked to a couple of districts about because there's talk about making some of these changes permanent, you know, so if it's gonna be the case, obviously, we're not legislators in here, so we don't know if that's gonna happen, but, you know, so so that's a potential thing.
Are you looking at ideas here, John, or what do we?
Not yet. We, like I said, we just, we just received this ourselves, so, you know, we, we can take a look at that if there's some equipment, point-of-sale things that we can do to run it a little more efficiently, so, you know, again, like you said, you know, wait times, things like that, so
What do you mean by wait times?
Yeah, so you put another register in.
Oh, so servicing, so
Yeah, servicing.
Okay.
You know, reconfigure. Mary, Mary's aware and Mary knows.
So like in the elementary where there's, you have like basically two lines that are going through that, that would be
That would be something like that, maybe, you know, but I think once the dust settles at the cafeteria and Mary and her team get back into her team, we will, we will have conversations about ways that she can things that we might need to make that program, you know,
So then those expenditures
More interesting maybe for the high school kids, something fun, like, you know, make it more of a cafe, you know, things like that that you can do to, you know, increase interest and make things more pleasant, so, you know, a lot of options.
And too, I mean, you know, food, food costs are gonna be, be rising more this year probably than the reimbursement rates that are already set, too, so. Keep an eye on those things, too.
So once these rates, they'll go away, which they carry on through, what, December the thirty-first, or do they go through the rest of the
I think they've extended it through the end of the
Through June?
Through June now.
So once that gets back to normal rates and reimbursement rates, you wouldn't have as much
You wouldn't be earning as much, but that fund balance is here, not debate.
It would be offset by food costs and
Right, right. So your expenditures may go up based on food costs, so your three-month expenditure limit is, would be higher anyways, so.
So the free meal program is slated to go through the end of the school year for now. And that reimbursement rate that we have right now is locked in through the end of the school year. We're unsure what next school year is going to bring. So it goes through the end of the school year, not including the summer program?
Summer, summer is, summer feeding is free.
So that will continue on through the summer months? That is a separate fund? Okay.
I mean, it's run through the same I mean, it's run through the same, same thing, but the, it's a different waiver.
Gotcha. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
The next fund on here, the miscellaneous special revenue, that's a reason, the same new accounting standard. So if you look back at 2020 financial statements, you're not going to see a miscellaneous special revenue fund. This is basically the scholarship activity of the district, used to show up in trust and agency. It's now reported in a, in a separate fund in the financial statements. Just so you're aware, if you're comparing back to last year, you're not going to see that. Just another new accounting, or same new accounting standard, brought that into a new fund. And then the capital projects fund, you know, we talked about that $2 million being transferred in to seed the new $15 million project. The end of June, there was about 1.2 million dollars expended in that project, $134,000 for the bus purchase last year is what really made up the bulk of the expenses you'll, you'll see in there for 2021. But I, I know you guys are well aware of the status of your capital projects and, and the activity that's going on with that. On the last page is the entity wide statement. If we think those operating funds can add in the long-term assets and the long-term liabilities of the district and put them in one column like a corporate style financial statement. This is what it looks like and really the, the main number that we talk about on this page is just the deficit unrestricted net position at the bottom of the page of just about $4 million. That's just a result of the district's post-employment benefit obligations. District hires an actuary on an annual basis to perform a calculation of that liability. It's about $5.4 million at the end of 2021. The district has no legal authority to fund that liability, so that creates a deficit in that unrestricted net position. So it's required to be there by accounting standards, but it's not really the way the district operates. District funds that liability one year at a time because you approve your budgets one year at a time. So just to, to make you aware of that. But really, $5.4 million liability on a district with a $23, $24 million budget, that's really a pretty, pretty good liability. It's definitely on the lower end of the spectrum with, with what we see out there. So I don't think there's really too much to be concerned with, with that, but make you aware. Any questions on the numbers? Anything I talked about or anything I didn't talk about that you might ask about?
A lot of times we hear about candy bar sales and we get down to minutia. This is a nice overview of where we stand right now.
The district does have some corrective action plans that we need to respond to. They are not major by any means. There's just, I think there's only two, yeah, there's only two. We'll give the board an update on that, but again, nothing, nothing major.
Those were the, the two fund balance items that I mentioned, the 4.38% of the school lunch.
The lunch fund, so those are the two.
So those are the two corrective actions you'll need to.
That's, that's better than what we've heard in the past. A lot better, I think. Anything else, guys? Yeah. Thank you, sir.
All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Next on the agenda, the minutes. You get resolved that the minutes of September 14th, 2021 meeting be approved. Can I get a motion?
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, visitors request. Terry, you taking a look?
All right, we're looking to look, yeah, we are.
Okay. Approval of warrants. It is resolved that after an audit of the bills payment of the September 16th, 2021 and October 1st, 2021 warrants and internal claims audit reports were approved. Can I get a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on the reports, Christine, what do you have more to say?
Well, the biggest thing obviously was the financials presentation by Mike DeBots. At the November board meeting, you'll get the full financials and the corrective action plan to approve or accept at that meeting. Also in the November meeting, you're going to see an updated reserve on plan that kind of ties into that for your approval as well. John's going to share that with you as part of his update that he does. So you'll have that document to review and that'll be on next month's meeting. If you have any questions on it, just reach out, we can answer those. We're moving forward, making progress on our $100,000 annual capital outlay projects. The one for this year was addressing the entryways behind, at the high school parking, the new high school parking and the student entrance at the bus loop. We're going to be submitting next week to SED those plans and hoping to have, from what we're hearing, it's six weeks, but they're pushing these capital outlay projects through faster, so we might actually get a pretty quick approval on that. So I, Justin, you got to sign some paperwork for that tonight.
And that's something that, that we're going to continue to tap into, that's.
Every year, I think it's a fantastic thing. You can whack little projects out of the way. Next summer is going to be doing the bleachers and I was going to say next month you'll see the secret. In the next few months, you'll see the secret resolution coming onto the board doc for the next year's project so we can get that moving, so we're ready to order. Again, we don't want to have any product delays for when that work starts. We want to do that next summer. That's for those bleachers and the divider and the elementary gym.
And then that was out of pocket, that we, that was.
So it's part of your budget project.
Right.
Or that's part of your budget process. We put $100,000 in that, in our $21 million annual budget.
Okay.
So that gets approved every May and we want to be able to, when you approve it on May 17th, I want to be able to place the order on May 18th so that we have it for the summer. So it's done. And then next month, you're going to see the budget calendar. So, and that start, that process will start right, start all over again. So we're right back where we were a year ago. That's about it.
You'll get those documents in my weekly update this Friday. They'll be attached on the board docs that Christine was mentioning.
Your turn, your turn.
Sure. I have an update on the pool. This weekend, it is scheduled for the new filters to be installed in the pool because we are getting ready for the winter swim season. As I mentioned to the board before and speaking with Katie Hillchi and Jeff Schlegenhoff and and I know Katie has done a little bit of research and talked to some other modified swim coaches in the area, we believe that we are, we are going to modify our swim season with the modified team and run a club. We have low numbers, low numbers are being seen across the region. So I know Katie reached out to a lot of her colleagues and they kind of feel that they're going to be in the same boat and have really kind of agreed to kind of do the same thing we are. So what, what we are planning on doing is running a modified swim club, but we would also now include sixth graders. We believe the sixth graders now can participate, obviously because it's not a, not a, an official modified program. We're going to run that from November 1st through probably the middle of January. We would run it, you know, a few days per week, Tuesday, Thursday, you know, Monday, Wednesday, from, you know, three to four after school. And those sixth, seventh and eighth graders, not only the seventh and eighth graders that signed up to actually swim in the modified program, but including the sixth graders, they will be able to learn from Mrs. Hillchi, get the instruction and the practice that they need. And then we also talked about, you know, periodically possibly just talking to a neighboring district, hey, why don't you bring your modified swim club over, you know, no officials, nothing, you know, official, but just to kind of maybe do some scrimmages or have some sort of, you know, you know, celebration at the end. But with our numbers right now, we're at, we're at seven modified swimmers. We just can't have, have a team. So hopefully in the future, by including the sixth graders, we can get those numbers up and then we'll, we'll just kind of go from there. But that's, that's going to be our plan and we look to start that within the next couple of weeks. We just got to work out some lifeguarding issues and, and things like that. Obviously there will be a varsity season and like you said, we're gearing the pool up for that. We are currently creating a schedule for the PE classes at the middle high school to use the pool. Again, we're working out some details with some lifeguarding concerns. There is a board approval later on in the agenda to approve a former student who is certified to lifeguard, that when he's available, he can come in here and, and help, you know, lifeguard for the PE classes, you know, and possibly some of our events after school.
John, on the filters there, at times it seemed like maybe the situation was dire with our pool and a lot of money's going to need to be spent. So these filters are going to make it, so we're jumping in the pool next week, everything's going to be good.
They are a larger Band-Aid on stuff that we've tried to, you know, stop the bleed before, so this is not the answer, but it's something that we can, we can do at this, at this point to just, you know, keep the pool running. We're just going to have to monitor it week to week. My intention is with obviously the winter season and, and having this modified swim club and the varsity season and now having PE classes in there, I do want to open up the, you know, the pool back to the community in the evening. But again, it's, it's kind of a touch and bill. We're just going to really have to see. The issue comes in is when something goes wrong and maybe it won't be the filters, but something else happens, that pool, you know, the mechanisms in the pool are so old that if we try to place an order, it, it's hard to find it. And then when we do find it, you know, we can't, we can't get it. No one wants to install it, so it's, it's really, it's really an issue. But, you know, Jordan is working hard to make sure that we have that pool up and running and, and ready for the winter season. So we have, it's Deep Blue is the company coming out to install the filters this weekend.
Do they consult with Jordan? Does he, they work with him on, you've got an old asset here, this is the best way to get it through your swim season?
Yep. Yep. You know, like I said, there's, you know, if anybody's had a pool, you have multiple layers, whether it's the heater, whether it's the filters, whether it's this, whether it's, and, you know, we just, unfortunately, it's, it's that old that you just kind of keep going back to it. So.
What were you going to say, Matt?
I wonder if one of our two words that we're doing here before these meetings to look at this capital project, where this, this pool control room, where is this thing?
Well, that's, that's, that's what we were intended to do tonight, but I think the time ran short. I did ask to see it tonight, but we did, we did.
Get us a better understanding of what's going on.
Yeah.
Has it been this way for quite a while, right?
Since I've been here, yes.
But I mean, before that, I mean, it goes back.
So we did open, I do not remember discussion at this level, maybe I've been ignorant here, but we've, we've done community swims prior to COVID. I mean, not, not a lot, but, you know, Katie through the winter. Tim Edgerton is a board member, was one that advocated as much as anybody to get this pool open in the community. And I think he had some success there for a period of time. And, and whether that was less pressure made coming from the board to try to keep this open or it was COVID or it was functional issues, I don't know. But I feel like we used to get our kids in the pool.
Yeah. The first summer that I was here back in 2019, we did have it open. We had the fitness center open on a few days and the, and the pool was open on a few days. And then, you know, I mean, I don't want to use COVID as, as an excuse. I mean, that, that is, you know, one of the things that, you know, kind of shut it down. But, you know, day to day, they're just issues, you know? Jordan will come in or his crew will come in in the morning and all of a sudden the water's cloudy and they have to go and well, the chemicals are fine, well, what's not working? Well, it's not backwashing, it's not this, it's not, you know, so it's.
I, I guess, I think from Matt's point, I don't want to speak for you, Matt, but it's, it never got to our level. It just, it just hasn't, the repairs, and I think it's an asset that's pretty large. And for us not to really have great understanding of the severity.
Okay.
That makes sense, man. You know, and I, I've mentioned this before, and we all own houses, right? If we had a house and a problem of that size and we didn't know about it, that's pretty alarming to me. So I think moving forward, I, I'd like to see when a problem does arise immediately.
Well, one of the things that was, that was happening prior to all of this was, you know, the pool would be great, temperature's great, levels chlorine would be great, and you'd have a swim practice and after an hour, when the kids got out, the pool, you couldn't see the bottom of the pool. Now, what's the cause for the cloudiness? You know, so then Jordan and his crew goes in there and they check the levels, everything seems to be fine. You know, what's the issue? And, and a lot of times when something like that happens, we, we don't know the issue.
But just even a document, you know, for, for us at some point would be just kind of nicer, then we would know and say, holy cow, this is, you know?
Does Jordan, any certi, like aquatic certification or, or work, are we, I mean, because I know it's not just everybody really knows how to take care of pool, if anybody knows, you can kind of do it, but this is a pretty industrial sized commercial, obviously, pool, so that probably would be more, and it's 365 days a year where the kids are in it. So in my experience.
I checked on it today.
And I don't know in the past, I can't speak to it, but this problem seemed to have been way before, obviously you came here, John, before, I mean, I've been closer to the swim team only because I've had family members in there, being closer to going to meet. This has been a continual, much sooner than you've been here, but I don't think the extent, and I think back to what you guys said, I don't think the extent has gotten exposed to that point, but how did it get there? I, I don't, I don't know, but do we have like logs? Do we have certifications of aquatic people trained to really know how to deal with this 365 days a year?
I can't tell you Jordan's knowledge on it. I mean, I can tell you he's very knowledgeable, you know, you know, just kind of like any service call, if it's something that he can't fix or doesn't know, you know, we, we reach out. But, you know, I mean, tomorrow morning, I mean, the pool looked great this afternoon. Tomorrow morning, we could come in and all of a sudden something shut down, something didn't work. You know, we, I mean, it's, it's almost, yeah, we're, we're in that reactive mode because the pool is so old and that's not how you, that's not how you want to, you know, continue on with it. But obviously, again, we want to have a, a swim season, it's fast approaching and, you know, we've been waiting on these filters for, for a while. So, you know, so I guess to your point, Matt's point, yeah, this is, this is another quick fix, but I, I do think it's a bigger Band-Aid because there's a lot that is going into this. It's not like, okay, we just kind of clean pipes out and here we go. So, you know, there's, there's new filters and, and new equipment being installed and again, we're just going to have to monitor it, you know, day by day. But in the long run, I, I absolutely do agree that, you know, to keep that open and keep it running, and like I said, my goal after the, the swim season is to have that open for the community, we're really going to have to take a hard look at, you know, repairs and replacements of, of the pool. It's, it's old.
Hey, John, I know with the change in SED, where is this line, where we are with our building condition survey? And that would be part of that analysis?
So that was a part of the building condition survey. But again, the, this project that we're currently in was, you know, the safety and security and some of the other things that, you know, we felt needed higher priorities that again, we could, we could get by. It's, you know, again, it's, it's kind of like the track, you know, the track, okay, that's in need of repairs, but, you know, we can, we can get along with what we have. But, you know, after this project, there's going to be some serious discussions about this is now a high priority, absolutely.
Can we have those discussions based on a plan that we have set?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like a, like a three to five year plan that's involving the community?
Correct. What I'm looking for is possibly having a, you know, a buildings committee where now after this project, we're going to be rolling in additional capital projects, additional $100,000 outlays. Usually that would consist of two or three board members, just not four because that's a quorum, but, you know, have a couple of community members, you know, a couple of teachers and we sit down and, you know, working with SEI, you know, they're still part of the process. They can outline, you know, list of items that the district needs to get fixed and then we prioritize them and, and continue to go out and communicate with the, with the community and get these things fixed, absolutely.
This is a world, just being at the YMCA, we have an old pool, this is the world I live in 24/7. Part of the reason why we're building a new YMCA right now because we just can't keep putting Band-Aids on a pool that, you're absolutely right, you know, you go to buy parts and repair it and they're. and they're obsolete, they don't exist. So it's not like going to the pool store and, and getting a new filter for it. That you have to wait quite, quite a lengthy period of time. So I completely understand and respect the, the big Band-Aids for now. But you're right, those Band-Aids eventually are going to wear off and there's not going to be any more Band-Aids. There's only one solution if we're going to continue to have a pool here. I guess the other point that I wanted to make as well is, you know, at the YMCA, we have, we have people that are designated all day long, while we're operational, they're very knowledgeable, they're experts in the pool. You know, it's not something where we can just pick up a manual and I can walk in and I know exactly what I'm looking for with, you know, the pH levels. And then you've got the electrical room and the filters and the pumps and this one's got to be flipped. Like there's a whole system that you really need someone who specializes in that to know what they're looking at and to know what they're doing. Is there any opportunity for us to contract or to look at, you know, someone locally? We've got LBN Pool Company that's local, we've got Deep Blue that's local. We've got some local companies that maybe would be willing to walk through even once a week. And they know exactly what it is they're looking for, they know exactly what it is that we need. Just because it is a unique area of the building that's, not a lot of people have that skillset to know with a, with a, not, not a new pool, we're talking about a very old pool. So just something.
But even so, with a, a new pool, if we choose to invest in this for, I mean, this is an investment. And I can speak for my previous employment and involvement of the aquatics at United Memorial Medical Center. We had therapy pools installed, that decision came up, what do we do? Do we call maintenance to come over when we have a problem? We have a million dollar investment here that are more. No, we sent those people to get fully trained. We, you know, had that whole thing, that is a whole separate, you know, separate monster. So that was the investment.
And I do believe we have some of our maintenance, either Jimmy or and/or one of our custodians has a pool certification, but I don't know what that covers, so I don't want to speak to that. But I do like the suggestion of having a building swimming grounds committee where some board members along with Jordan, and we can have these conversations where we have every, all the information at the table. And maybe we can bring in an expert that could have a conversation with us about, you know, what would they suggest to maybe get us through until our capital project and maybe till we can do something bigger, you know.
So these current bigger Band-Aids we're doing are going to suffice hopefully with all, you know, fingers crossed, get through the season, get through some phys ed. You know, aside from extracurricular and athletics, swimming is a, is a life skill. I mean, we do a lot of things, we talk about the track, we talk about athletic fields. This is something, if I can't teach somebody a sport, I can teach them a safer life for somebody else's. That, that's something our district has a huge advantage. Not every school has that ability. We're very fortunate, we've had that in our community for a very long time. That alone, teaching kids how to swim, they potentially never get to do that. I know unless you're a member of the YMCA or go to preschool there, you know, you can go and get that if you have the means, the availability to get there. We have a really big asset here that I think we haven't used in a long time or properly because again, just the Band-Aids. But I think it got out of use because it's been broken so many times, people got out of the habit, including the phys ed teachers, including the, you know, community staff involvement. It just got out of habit. So getting that back in would be obviously that vision you talked about, a three to five year plan or whatnot. But as a community investment, as a district investment, as a life investment for kids to save their own life, if not somebody else's, that's, that's pretty big.
I'd like to develop a plan, not what it is, but what it could be. And I think, you know, instead of us referring to it as a pool, it's going to be a center, a place that's going to provide the community with enrichment opportunities. If it's seniors going in to do water aerobics or Mrs. Glenn doing yoga or whatever it is. Not, not that Mrs. Glenn needs to do that, but whatever it needs to do. I think it, it has the potential to develop even more community within our community. And I think that that's what our board's goal always is, is to take what we have and capitalize upon it. And with the conditions in, it's in. There's nothing we're going to be able to do about it right now. But we have to make sure that we do move forward.
Is there been any consideration? I know we've talked a lot about sixth grade and up, but what about the elementary kiddos? That fourth and fifth grade? I mean, I can remember years ago, that was, that was a unit, you know, we used to.
Fired up to go.
You know, and I, and I can remember my hair like being frozen out to the side, walking back over to the elementary school.
It's been moved to the summer, or to the spring curriculum the last four years. So obviously with the bar shutdown, they were slated to go swimming shutdown. Last year, they weren't in the locker rooms, using locker rooms. So we weren't able to swim last year. This year, it's on the docket for spring, so that they can walk back over and not have frozen hair, hopefully.
We did the same thing at the Y, we, we switched the seasons for that purpose. So Lynn, how, what grade level starts the swim unit at the elementary school?
So I don't want to make any formal statements. I know that Cory and Andrea have been talking about what that might look like for them. We still have to talk about the availability of our hopefully approved lifeguard this, this evening. So there's conversations. They've typically stuck to fourth and fifth, but depending on the availability of, of people that can help and how that schedule might look, we are open to suggestions. The issue that we run into is when we were kids, we had two classes, there's four adults on the docket. That fourth grade group is large. If you take both Andrea and Cory's classes at the same time, that's 40 kids in a pool at once. So you need to make sure we have the manpower. So there's some conversations that need to happen to make sure that we can provide the safe environment and that they're going to get the instruction they need to learn to swim. And it's not just a play rugby and, you know, in the sun in the shallows. So those are all conversations that are happening. I know that they're going to be going to PE conference in November. And there's a lot of conversations that they want to have there amongst themselves and kind of facilitate that for us.
That's great. Yeah, it's good to hear.
And I did just get confirmation that Jim and Jordan both are certified in pool operations.
Oh, sorry. Okay, this past weekend, we inducted four alumni into the OACS Hall of Fame. Thank you for being there, Justin, and I'm seeing you did a fantastic job. I attended the dinner with, with Matt Peterson and then obviously Justin. So congratulations to Lawrence Barthoff, class of 59, Leanne Skelton, class of 79, Mark Will, class of 85, and Gary Patnode, class of 95. Those are the new inductees. It was a great dinner, a great event. They have accomplished a lot. And so congratulations to them. It was nice to, to have them and meet them and greet them and, and see them that evening. Just wanted to give kind of some good news to the board and to our community. In Class D in New York State, our football team is ranked number four. Our boys cross country is ranked number four and our girls cross country is ranked 10th. And that's state rankings. So that's, that's great. Obviously, our football team is, is undefeated, our cross country teams are undefeated. And hopefully they continue that on through sectionals and looking forward to getting some titles and some champion, champions, you know, here within the building. Our varsity girls soccer played tonight at seven o'clock, home sectional versus Canisdale Greenwood. So we're hosting a home game tonight. Hopefully, I don't know if you're getting any updates.
Not yet.
And like I said, our elementary students are located back in the cafeteria for lunches starting this week. The kitchen is still not functional, but we are serving hot lunches to our students. I do want to give a shout out to our cafeteria staffs. I honestly, they're, they've just been unbelievable. To tell, you know, these ladies that they can't kitchen, you know, can't cook in their kitchen, they have to come over here. Then we have to transport down there. And now kind of, you know, tightening it up where now they have to serve hot foods. They have been absolutely amazing and I just can't thank them enough for their flexibility and patience, although I know it's wearing thin. Just, I want, I want to go on record and just appreciate everything that you've done, not only for our students, but, you know, just, just the families and being patient. You know, once that cafeteria is up and running, I hope, hopefully you're going to love it. But until then, you know, just keep, keep working because our, our kids need it. And just thank you for, for your dedication to OA and what you're doing, you know, each and every day. And I just don't know if anybody else has any good news, anything else they want to share?
Yeah, I'm excited that my after school activities are up and running. Transportation has been doing the late bus for us, so that's a huge convenience for our families. Matt and I were able to work with the Math Olympians and our sixth grade students are also walking down to participate in Math Olympias this year. They were not a part of that, there's a Math team at their level. So that was related for us to kind of fill that need for them. And so they're, they're coming back on Tuesdays, so we're excited.
Lynn, is that going to be done virtually again, you think?
The competitions?
Yeah.
Um, I haven't heard if they're going to do the, the competition virtual or not for page turners or Math Olympias yet. I'm still kind of waiting. I think it's kind of like a solo fest thing where they're all kind of talking about what are numbers looking like, where's comfortability look like for the communities? So I'm hoping that we'll have some answers real soon.
I think that would be cool, or if they can go back to.
I agree. You, it's a different competitive atmosphere when you're there on the same stage and you're done talking. You're, you know, so I think it's exciting for our kids to be in that, that, those high stakes moments.
Yeah.
You lose those high stakes moments when we're, you know, virtual. So if it's an open opportunity, oh, field's voting, yes, in person all the way. But we're excited to have the, the noise of the after school.
That's great.
That's good.
For the middle school, we just had very successful Rachel's Challenge assemblies on Tuesday last week. Wednesday, all of our eighth graders and any seventh grader who wanted to participated in a full day workshop, helping them develop the character traits we're really looking for, which is developing kindness and compassion. In about four weeks, we'll follow that up with our hand print, their hand prints going on the wall. All sixth and seventh graders will accept Rachel's challenge, put their hands on the wall with the name in it. So they'll be, you know, have their name, hand on the wall, so they're a part of our building forever. And then we also have been having a great rollout of our academic support procedures. We've had lots of tutoring going on after school, phenomenal gains. We have had our first students for Saturday tutoring and that was successful. I think we have four that were here this past Saturday, getting some work done, really, really advancing really well. So things are going well.
I actually just wanted to make a little comment about our last conference day. I heard a lot of good things. It was one of the first conference days where we didn't like it, just have everybody do the same thing in the morning, do the same thing in the afternoon. It was really hard to coordinate, but Lynn was able to work with her elementary crew on what they were doing with their curriculum pieces. We had Matt working with the middle and high school crew on their pieces. I worked with a support team and interventionist as we're implementing the MTSS system, what does it look like to drill down on data. JC had crews, he brought in Sherry from.
Sherry Crayer from the Tink Sorcerers.
To work with our special ed teacher to give our aides some real meaningful work as well. We worked on.
We had the student support team and working on what our student support team structures going to look like.
So it was.
What, what it looks like or what it's going to look like?
Both.
Evolving.
We're evolving, so we're, and we just added Melissa in to that mix on Tuesday last week. And we're, we're going through those growing pains, figuring out how it's going to work. So it was both.
So it was a really nice opportunity. It was a crazy day, but it was a very nice opportunity to kind of differentiate a little bit more for our staff at all levels, so.
It was nice to be an instructional leader again, you know, we've been so COVID protocols and construction stuff. But to be together and really talk curriculum is like my second language. And it just was rejuvenating for me and my faculty to be able to go back to that. So it was a fantastic day.
All right, Connie, talk to me about G.O.D.s.
Oh, G.O.D.s.
I want to hear about it, yep.
Okay, so G.O.D., so at the elementary school and now in the secondary, with the advent of bringing our literacy specialist on board, we've really moved towards structured literacy. So it, some people think when they hear signs of reading, it goes just phonics. It's so much more than that. It's a whole approach to how we explicitly teach our students. So what G.O.D.s is, is a set of decodable books. Our district is using a program called Foundations to help with the phonics portion of structured literacy. The G.O.D.s are decodable books that align perfectly with that Foundations program.
Level one, right?
Yep, so they, they meet right together. And the other neat thing about, I'm excited about the G.O.D.s, is they are based in content rich knowledge. So it might be a set of books about historical things, but they're at a level that kids can read and decode. So we're not only improving their ability to read words, we're improving their knowledge and their content base. So the idea behind them, we slowly break them up through the grades and they get here and they have that rich base. So when they're hearing things, a lot of our kids don't get exposed to words like cathedral. What's a cathedral? They don't get exposed to some of the history and stories that maybe you or I heard when we were kids. And it puts them at a disadvantage for comprehension. Because if you don't know what words mean, you can't answer a comprehension questions right, even if you can pronounce the word. So the G.O.D.s are pairing with our Foundations, are intended to go together to not only help them read, learn how to read, but also to kind of really strengthen that content knowledge of the world.
I was creeping on you, you know? I was creep, I was creeping on you. I was looking in windows.
Were you looking in our boxes?
Yeah, I was, actually. I was.
They're all, they've all been in the, in the hall.
So I, when I was checking to see if these people were working, that they were working here. It was, and so I said, what the heck is this G.O.D.s stuff? And I, all I could picture was those rocks that you break apart. And then I went even deeper on the creep and I started to research. And you're, you're starting to turn a guy into a science of reading guy, which I really didn't agree with earlier on. Just to let you know, just to keep it more transparency.
Yeah, we like your transparency.
It's totally transparent, to be honest with you. And so I do like, just as a side note, is I, I do like the idea that you're coupling Foundations with G.O.D.s. And it seems like a very, very good plan. And my little first grader, who's, who's a nice little girl. It's amazing to see what she's done just in the first, you know, four or five weeks of school. Yeah, Nate, she's just very, no, no. No, but I, I really do like it and I see a plan unfolding here, at least K2. And I, and I appreciate, I, I really do appreciate it.
I would like to, in that thread, give a shout out to our teachers. Because Lynn and I have received more emails this year that teachers have sent each other, like the third grade teachers to the second grade teachers, like, oh my gosh, I cannot believe, we've never had kids who could read this well. The second grade teachers to the first grade teachers, oh my goodness, these kids, like, they're further advanced than we've ever had kids and they're writing and they're reading. And this is, they're sending each other these emails and then we get privy to them later. So I am just, I'm humbled by the work they've done because we did this in the middle of COVID. We, we got rid of all the security in the middle of COVID and said, hey, know better, do better. This is what we're learning, let's learn with us.
How do you like it, Stella?
Yeah, I actually did the first lesson this week and they loved it because it was on swirls. But the cool thing is, yeah, the cool thing is though, we started, we had to wait because it picks up on our second unit. And kids that struggle with reading did a really nice job reading a lot. And the cool thing is they get copies to take home. So everyone gets their own copy, they keep it until we're done with the unit and then they get to take it home. So for me, and even though, it's teacher friendly.
It's a pretty cool video that they pumped up to show up, it's really to see.
I plan on bringing our literacy team here in, you know, February, March, whenever it's elementary turn again. I don't know what the rotation is, but they're going to do some really nice work. They're talking about the writing revolution, so we're really hitting up on the writing side. That's going to be a K8 initiative, so I know we can talk about this all night. I'm going to stop because it's going to be a future presentation.
We're excited, I'm super proud of our teachers.
Good, thank you.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
That is all that I have.
Okay, thanks. Okay, that takes us on to new business. Let's see, be it resolved, item 7.2 through 7.13 be approved by the set agenda. Make a motion. Second?
Second.
Just a, just a very quick discussion in there. And 7.9 is field trip for the boys' basketball team to go to Cleveland. And I just want to provide an opportunity for any questions. Mr. Stellar is here for that. Do we have any questions about that trip and all of it? Mr. Stellar, it's going to be a fun time, I'm hoping?
Oh, yeah, so we did this a few years ago, yeah. It'll be a smaller scale, but I think I know what I'm doing.
Make sure you go with Charles, you come back and talk.
All digits, breathing.
Yeah, the difference, the difference with this one is the last two times we went, it was a trip there and trip back. This time, based on the date and our opponent, it's easier because we have to go there and we needed to try to pick a weekend game, so we're just going to call it Midnight Madness. So actually, we're going to watch the Cavaliers game, and then once they get off the court, we get to go on to the court. And we don't have any time restraints, and we have the whole arena to ourselves.
Very cool.
So we'll stay overnight, so there's a couple of things that I have to change, but I appreciate the approval. Honestly, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks, Ryan. And then seven point one two is the Plumb Tower. This is where we are agreeing to some, some change language, I believe.
Yes. Yeah, nothing, nothing major. We added a couple of companies in there. Nothing of monetary value has changed. It's all just minor, you know, kind of going back and forth and putting extra words in there that really doesn't have an effect in the long run. So you had approved this before. Again, just because we did change and added a couple, you know, titles and companies and things in here, we wanted to have you reapprove the wording.
I think the big deal, though, here is the $357,000 that we'll get. That's tax exempt, right? That's going for the next, each year, for the next 20 years.
For 20 years.
Yep, that amounts to seven point one four million dollars or something like that. That's, that's, that's there, so I just thought that that was to note. And then other than that, does anybody else have any discussion with these items here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Communications. Nothing.
Nothing.
Communicate. Okay, discussion roundtable. I don't think we had any committee meetings at all.
We did. We did, we did. We had a health and wellness committee, yeah, committee meeting in, what, September, mid-September. And we had a good walk to school day, was October 1st, and I just think that was a good success. And first time in how long, no rain? I don't, I don't even know.
I've never been here when it hasn't been done, well, Walker Bike to School Day, so this was the first time.
I think it happened the first year, we didn't have any rain, and we all got excited about it, and that's right ever since.
Everybody got to school, showed up, went to the night, we got, so success, right. I think we have a couple of dates for Bike to School in May, Color Run, I think in June 10th. We did some subcommittee kind of breakouts we're going to kind of do, but other than that, I think, Connie, if you want to add anything?
No, I'm just excited because with the subcommittees Jackie mentioned, people are going to take responsibility. It, it, there's too much for everybody to do, so each person kind of looked at their interest area, we're forming little groups. We have some teachers that are, that'll work on activities for our teachers, because they felt like that was something we needed to do, and we have some people that are going to work a little bit more on mindfulness. And so it's a different approach than the committee has used in the past. I'm hoping using the subcommittee approach, maybe we can get a little bit more done. We'll see, but I'm excited. We, we had a pretty good turnout, and we're going to just keep marching forward.
Good, exciting. There's a lot of initiatives for health and wellness, obviously, mental health, physical health, everything else together. Hopefully, part of this, this maybe aquatic vision pool plan will include some of that, because I think that's a, again, another initiative that is just a necessity at this point for the way we all live in this world. So hope to continue to live, I should say, healthy. Exciting, so that's it.
Any other updates? On personnel. Be it resolved that items 10 two through 10 15 be approved by a consent agenda? Can I get a motion?
So.
Third, man. Second, third, fourth? Okay, we'll give it to Matt.
10.2, really quick, I think it's important to note that we have purchased the services of, well, I'm going to have Connie explain this in just a sec, because I'm going to screw it up. But we are now having a substitute in our building two days a week, no matter what. And I think that that says a lot. Trying to solve this sub shortage. Longer the days where you can make a phone call as a teacher, and someone's going to accept that, and they're going to go in and write a nice little note, your class was a pleasure, and then go home. So right now, it's, it's very difficult to find anybody to come in. And then we're really relying heavily on our support staff, and it's really burdensome for the support staff to have to get moved here and moved there. And it's mentally fatiguing, not just for the support staff, but the people, the administrators that have to program in those slots. So Connie, I'll shut up, talk to us about this sub.
Okay, so what we've done as a district is purchased a COSER, which stands for Combined Services, through Monroe Two BOSIs. And what this service entails is they, so Monroe Two BOSIs have, they call it a fellowship program, where people that are in service of teaching program, they could be an undergraduate or graduate, so they have to currently be in a teaching program that will lead to a teaching certificate in New York State. So what they do is they provide this group, first they interview people for this program. They provide them with professional development, and then, based on the schedule, those teachers can go to different school districts. And I'm going to explain how it works in our district. So we have Krista Austin, she actually is an Oakfield native, which is, makes it extra cool. She is working on, I forget the exact certification, it's one six or N six now, students with disabilities. So that's the teaching program she is in. She has gone through training at Monroe Two, like PD we could send our teachers to, including classroom management. And she comes to us every Tuesday and Wednesday, no matter what. So if Lynn has positions open that need filling, she can go be a classroom teacher. If Lynn doesn't have positions, which does not happen, but let's imagine she didn't, she still would come to us, and we could use her in any way that we wanted. She could provide testing services, she could be an extra support in a special ed classroom. The benefit for her is she's guaranteed two days of working, no matter what. She gets to experience any building, she's building the relationships. She also will continue to have professional development through Monroe Two. The thing that's extra cool for us, it's all COSER-able. So what's our ratio with BOSIs?
Eighty-three point three.
Okay, so eighty-three point three percent of the money that we pay her to be with us twice a week, guaranteed. We also pay her $14 an hour for PD, we get that money back. She also, and I'll let you do the tutoring piece too, she's doing more for us than just these two days a week. She has agreed to be on our sublist, so when available, now, mind you, she's in classes, so she's not always available, but she has her name on the elementary sublist and on the middle-high sublist for Monday, Thursday, Friday, that she would come in and help us. And she's also just recently signed up for the tutoring for that elementary school. So she is involved in herself deeply. We did try to get somebody for the middle-high school, they weren't able to find somebody. They do interview all of these candidates, and they approve everybody for this position. So this is a really unique opportunity. This isn't just a warm body. This isn't like hiring, like when you're a full-time sub. This is somebody who really wants to do this, who's in training to do this. It's a benefit for us, and it's a benefit for the candidate. So, and if all goes well, we can have her back in the spring, and they'll continue, they'll try again in the spring to get somebody for us for the middle-high school, because that's what we signed up for originally. I'm going to be real honest, people don't want to come out this far. That's what it amounts to. We're lucky that she lives in Oakfield. Batavia, I think, has maybe five people in the fellowship program. When I've talked to my colleagues over there, they usually don't last over there so long. So we're really fortunate, and I'm hoping she has a great experience, talks about it when she's at this PD with these other fellows and says, oh my gosh, this is great. She talks to her colleagues, so they can maybe get more in the pipeline.
That's key, the pipeline. And that's the thing, you know, when we're talking about our pipeline, it's broken. This is the way we can do some homegrown things. And it may not necessarily, as we move forward, be through BOSIs, but it could be where we're starting to tap people within district as kids saying, hey, listen, they've shown real interest in education, what can we do? How can we work with them? And start being creative to kind of feed back that pipeline that we're, it's so broken. I mean, we're, we're in big trouble right now, and maybe we have to start coming up with the creativity before the state does. Lynn, I think you were going to say something. And then the other thing that I just wanted to make note of is the fitness room is opened again, right, John?
Yeah, so we're working, the fitness center, we're starting to open that up again. There's an appointment or a resolution to have three people provide after-school supervision for students that want to use that. And I'm going to work with those three, along with Mrs. Hilchi, and see if they would be interested in having some evenings available for our community. So yes, we're, we're slowly opening that back up. We have brand-new equipment in there. It looks great, it's been cleaned, some great machines in there, and we, yeah, we want the community to use it, so we're going to open that up. And as soon as we figure out a schedule, and after they're approved, we'll get a schedule together and get it out there.
Perfect, and then I'm guessing we might be able to get that on our website?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on 10.16, appointment of interim coordinator of student services. Well, I think it's a little past the point, right? I think we might have, I'm hoping you're doing a great job over there, because we could be in trouble here.
If I can just say something about Tom, he, he has done a fantastic job. You know, he's coming in here on a, you know, on a month's time interim basis. He, he's already making friends, he cracks me up every time I see him. You know, he's, he's doing wonderful things for, for that office, and it's a pleasure to have him on board. And I'm glad you were available, and so, yeah, he's, he's doing a great job. And my intention is to have him continue on, so the transition for the next board resolution is, is a smooth transition, and then we'll be off and running.
It's been very enjoyable, very welcoming, and, you know, experience is a wonderful thing. It's like eat dinner, and the shortest, but with being him, and Warsaw, and Perry, and York, and Alexander, and Maryville, and Lancaster, and Catholic school, it's a, it's a good experience, but we have a lot of positive assets here to celebrate and nurture and grow. Thanks for welcoming on board for a bit.
You see a neon sign in his office, it says The Lion's Den. It looks kind of weird when you first glance at it, you're like, is that a Bud Light sign? The Lion's Den.
Neon, really neon.
Yes, it is.
I like to see that.
Well, thank you for helping us out, yes, appreciate it.
And then we have to approve it, right?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Item 10.17, appointment of coordinator of student services. It's recommended approving the appointment of Michelle Malat. Did I get it?
Malat. That's her. That was like spelled it all.
No, it doesn't. Malat, let me try that again. Recommend approving the appointment of Michelle Malat?
Yep.
To the 12-month, four-year probationary position of coordinator of student services effective October 25th, 2021, and ending October 25th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Very exciting, this opportunity. Welcome forward to be part of the team.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks so much.
All right, congratulations. Okay, I don't believe we're going into executive session tonight. And time for closing remarks. Dan, we're going to start with you tonight.
I was able to attend a Globe of Legends event at the Jensen County Fairgrounds a few weeks ago. And there was a number of industries there for students across the region to attend, and I, you know, glad to see Oakfield was well represented. It's just there's such a need out there for, as you saw in our capital project, a shortage of workforce that, I mean, every, it was just a great experience, I'm glad I was there. Gets here for attendance.
That's good, thanks, Dan. Maria?
So just to kind of piggyback on the walkthrough and just the updates, it's, it's really exciting to see those plans come to life. I had some very happy children who got to eat lunch in the cafeteria and, and got a warm meal this week. They're very excited about that, so it's exciting to share that excitement with my children when they come home and they're eager, you know, to tell me those things. And then, you know, the other thing I, I wanted to point out, Holly, you did a great presentation in the very beginning. I am not a music person by any means.
But you want to be now.
You're making it easy for me to be the parent of someone who wants to be, so I just want to give a shout out to the elementary school, and again, it's, I don't have anyone in the middle or high school, but the communication so far, just in these last couple of months, like, all of the staff, all of the teachers, everybody, administration, has just been so readily available to answer any questions, walk us through anything that we need. And the kids are just excited. I was at a birthday party over the weekend, and the kids were talking about school extracurriculars and things that are going on in school, and they were excited. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. It's, it's great to have some type of normalcy back, but to, to see and feel my kids excited about being in school and having teachers excited for them to be here, it just means the world to me, so thank you so much for that. Thanks.
Yeah, I was, you stole my thunder there a little bit.
We're on the second U.
You're putting a lot of energy into that, so Tom, of course, received the grant that he received. And you see these programs, they're only as good as the educators and the energy they put into that. So, you know, you're a true asset to that program. Tom is a wonderful asset to the school as well, so appreciate it, and all of the assets, all the great teachers and staff that we have. There were just a couple of examples.
Thanks, man. Jackie?
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, I, I'm up here a lot with kids, with extracurriculars, with just being a community member, and I, I continue to learn something new about this district every single day. Today, learning more about, I mean, our wonderful FFA, but the music, it's just, this is really a lot of good stuff that I literally go, oh my gosh, how did I not know about this stuff? Learning all the time, and I love it, and love the progress we have. I can see light at the end of the tunnel with a lot of this, you know, the pains with the project, but yet still, light at the end of the tunnel. It's really good to see. But I do want to, want to say also that picking my head up and talking with people and hearing and listening, the people on the front lines, the people on the back lines, the sidelines, the headlines, everybody involved, you know, I appreciate all of your efforts, I appreciate what you do. Sometimes you don't know how much people notice what you do, and maybe sometimes we don't. But every time I turn around, I'm noticing something new, and I, I love it, and I want you to continue to keep doing it. It's going to get noticed, it is noticed, and it will be much appreciated, and you do it for the kids, and this is what it's all for, playing on a greater team, which I like to remind people sometimes, teams can be at all levels. It can be class, it can be family, it can be district, it can be statewide. We are all on a bigger team, and I like to sometimes say, let's pick our heads up and look at that and be a part of that. Sometimes not be so tunneled, just be aware. And I really, really see good stuff happening, and I want to thank you, thank my board for being board appreciation ones. Thank you guys for tolerating a lot of my discussions. But I do appreciate, and I believe in discussion, and I like it, so please continue. My fellow board members, community, staff, students, and I do appreciate that, so thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. I think, like, the saying is bend don't break, and we're having to bend right now for, for, pretty, pretty big time down, at least in the elementary school. But there are moments of positivity in that bend. We just got an email from Sean McNutt, and he took an opportunity to take a class down, maybe a couple of classes down there. I couldn't quite tell how many classes went down there, but he took the opportunity to make a connection between those industries and his class. And I think that's what we're looking for. We're really looking for those moments of positivity you want in your heart. And I think each and every elementary teacher and the administration there, if it comes from the times when the toilets were overflowing and, and you were running around. Yeah, that was a tough day. It was, but it has to be acknowledged. You did something probably you never thought you would do as an administrator. But you, you did it, and you didn't complain, and that's, 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 it's okay to complain, because I think sometimes you just have to, to make it through one day to the next. I, I know in my. I, I know in my own school right now, we're, we're in a bit of, we're in crisis, we're having a hard time finding people to come in to sub and at some point, you know, if, if we move down the road, we have to start looking at when's our end point, where's our breaking point? And I think we have to be cognizant of that as a board, superintendent and as a staff. We all can see out there in the world how many places aren't open because they don't have enough staff there, we're no different here. And, and at some point, we have to, if it gets to a dire situation, which it very well could, we have to make a decision, what, what are we going to do next? And we can't, we can only be spread so thin, so it's definitely something, and I hate to be a grim guy, but it's something that we have to be cognizant of moving forward, what's our maximum capacity? And how much can we take on with minimal staff? So teachers that are out there at either elementary level, high school level, bus drivers, cafeteria, we have to know what is our, what is our cutting point? And how can we still, when's our point when we can't function at the level which we need to? So I, I don't want to add on that note, I don't think, so happy Halloween, no, I'm kidding, so can I get a motion to? Thank you, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And then, then happy Halloween, yeah, Mr. Stellar?
I just want to give one celebration, we had a former Hornet pass away, Steve Baker and one thing about this district is how much money was raised, not only to provide breakfast for Warsaw and their faculty, but to his family and Steve was a friend of mine, we got pretty close coaching basketball against each other and kept in touch. So I was really moved that Lynn and Mike Williams and stuff, everybody like got in our building in the middle high, did a really nice job of fighting together. You know, we always say like, once a Hornet, always a Hornet, and I'm glad that we just didn't let that go. So, you know, me personally, and I know a lot of people that knew Steve, appreciated that, so I think that'd be a good way to end.
Well, thank you, Ryan, for making that point, thank you very much, yeah, thank you. All right, guys, have a good night.
John, thank you for these, thank you so much.